Live. So I'm gonna call the November 21st meeting to order. And we'll start with rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the board just came out of a non-public session, and I'll entertain any motions.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we seal the minutes to the non-public session until such time as a majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
Second.
Second by Lisa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, if I may, with the exception of announcing HR decisions.
I second the amendment.
And I believe we have... Do we have a carryover from last time we want to announce?
We put those in the last set of minutes.
Okay. So they were in the previous minutes, so let's move on to approval of the minutes. Anyone for those?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of the non-public and public minutes dated November 7th, 2017.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move the public minutes dated November 10th, 2017.
Anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Larry Loston over there.
Aye.
Aye.
That sounds like everybody...
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the non-public and public meeting minutes dated November 14th, 2017.
Second.
Lisa, one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to scheduled business. First one is the Newton Fire Rescue Station project update. From Eastern Seaboard. Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Pevero, Eastern Seaboard, construction manager for the fire station. Quick update, I think some of you guys have been up there in the past couple of weeks, I don't know about all of you. We were fortunate, we hit one of the milestones yesterday, we get binder in before the plants close and window was done, I mean, the plants close and we lost the season for that, but we got it in yesterday.
Excellent.
For the areas that we need for the winter. There's more still to be done in the spring, but, you know, we did get that in. Right now, we're working on closing up the building side in the building. I have the floor scheduled for the administrative part of the building a week from today. I'm still hoping to have the building weather tight, second, third week of December. We're having some issues with siding because of the wind the past three or four days, making it a little bit slower, but, you know, we'll fight through it and get it done. That's really, that's really about it. It's pretty much on the schedule that we anticipated, so we haven't really lost any. The weather's been great, other than wind, and now it's starting to become winter, unfortunately.
So is the PD using the main driveway again now?
Yep. Yeah, everybody's using the main driveway.
Yeah.
It's all done in, also for the winter months.
All right. And then we're still kind of on the calendar for May in...
As we speak.
In light pencil?
Yeah, light pencil.
Yeah. So, all right, any other questions? I noticed the chief has been posting a lot of pictures and stuff, so I think the, it's been on our website, right? I know, I know it's on the department's Twitter and Facebook and stuff, but...
I have to send, I...
Yeah, 'cause if people, if residents are watching this and want to check it out, he's, he's got it on there, and at some point, you're gonna make this visually stunning, like, time-captured presentation, right? Hollywood quality.
Unfortunately, we try to be in there every Monday through Friday at the same time.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, due to, unfortunately, circumstances, call, or weather, et cetera.
Yeah.
It's not happening.
Yeah.
And it being an construction site, there's vehicles, we're trying to take the same photo.
Yeah.
Today, you're working on the driveway.
Yeah.
I can't ask the contractor, who is down truck, if I can take a photo.
I'm not.
I was actually asked, what do you call me?
We're not gonna hold it against you, don't worry. But it's been nice, you know, to see a few pictures here and there.
And at least the attempt is good, that, so we know we're getting a good amount of photos, and that's the important part.
People like to see that. Jim, you had something?
Oh, I just, there was an issue with the wind and the siding for the building.
Oh, that was...
Yeah, siding got damaged.
The big storm, the nor'easter.
Bundle up siding was banded up bundle up. It was, I don't know, was that two or three Mondays ago, we had that power outage and the wind came through there? Yeah, middle of the night, or early morning, like, 2:00, 'cause we were out already dealing with tree and powder, uh, power outages. Whole bundle of siding broke with the wind and scattered it around Chet's backyard, so...
Was it severely damaged, or was it solid?
Yeah, enough was damaged that we had to put in an order for replacement siding, yeah.
Okay. And we have insurance to cover?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this the fire department's revised budget?
Uh, yes.
All right, so I think that's it, right, for the project update?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, yeah.
We'll see as soon, we appreciate the progress report, and it, time's flying, so...
Thank you.
Well, Mike.
We'll move, go ahead.
We got one more thing from Mike today, right?
Well, he's got a few things, actually. So we'll have...
Is that the end of that one?
Yes. We'll have Eastern Seaboard sit down. So let's move on to the 28 budget reviews, and we'll call recreation first, since you're gonna be up there a while, so...
You guys, it's easy, you know.
I don't really know how this goes, but, you know, we submitted a budget that was a bit higher than last year's budget, and I'm here to...
It's not here.
...answer and/or explain any questions.
All right, so...
I'll just click on these.
The, do you wanna talk about special programs and the main reason why?
So there's two reasons why the budget is... I mean, I just did some quick math, and it looks like it went from $11,000 to $28,000. And that's for two reasons. One, we've, uh, we budgeted in Old Home Day instead of having it be a warrant article this year, and we've also added funding for a lifeguard at the beach.
So I mean, that's, you know, that's kind of a point of discussion for the board, 'cause if we wanted to make either of these things, or both of these things, warrant articles, again, we could, but the rec. commission was thinking, now that we've had the voters' approval of Old Home Day once, maybe we just capture it in the budget. But obviously, that'll be an uptick.
Why is...
Damned by including it in the budget, even if the budget fails, it's still not a no for that particular item.
And that's one of the...
It's just, that's your budget amount. So if Recreation decided that they wanted to forego some other activity, to bring maybe a minimized version, or whatever...
Could still do.
It would still be able to happen.
Yep.
So I like it being in the proposed budget.
Great. Larry?
What's the repair line for repairs? It's $1,000. You only spent $285, but then you want $2,000 for next year.
So a nice transition.
So the rec. commission feels like we don't do a good enough job taking care of the rec. properties, and there are significant repairs to be made, and upkeep in general needs to be done on these properties. And this is up from $1,000 to $2,000, but compared to 2015, it's actually down from $76,500. So we're not asking more than we have in the past.
You still have $700 in this year's budget towards repairs?
For now.
So are you repairing things between now and the end of the year?
We do have some projects planned down there for the end of the year.
He's using it, yeah.
So to my question, it was brought up at the meeting last night, Nancy, maybe you can answer this. If we were to, if we wanted to replace the fence that's down there, would that be a rec. budget item, or would that be a town buildings and...
Well, it depends if you budget for it under general government buildings or whatever. I don't know what we're talking, but...
'Cause I think what Steve's saying is, since we have some money left, we might take care of it this year.
Yep. If you get quotes and turn them in before year-end, you can encumber that money.
What is that for, just Home Day?
Yeah, most of it, yeah.
Like the revolving fund?
Like 80% of it.
Because it's...
It could.
You could use the...
But if they have money in their budget, you could use that.
Be the preference. And it wasn't just the fence, what else, Steve, was it?
We're also adding siding onto the beach shed.
What's the, the beach salary, we bringing back the lifeguards?
Yeah, that was my question, too.
One lifeguard or...
For $10,000?
So that was one of the things I mentioned a few minutes ago would be, and I think we talked about it last night, if we really had, if we thought people might not want it, we could put it as a warrant article, and then just let people decide.
Is it for lifeguards?
Yeah.
Okay, then, I think I would like to see that pulled out and put in as a warrant article, so that people really understand that this little chunk of money is for their children's safety, and as opposed to the budget's too high. And even if our budget gets voted down, they may still vote to go for...
But if we put it in a warrant article and they say no, then you can't put it in there, so you're not gonna have the lifeguards at all.
We haven't had lifeguards for a couple of years now.
For like three years, yeah.
So...
So it wouldn't really change our situation.
It wouldn't change anything. So, and I've heard people say, you know, why don't we have lifeguards? So let's give them an opportunity to say, yes, we feel it's important enough to vote yes.
Sounds reasonable.
Now, under the special programs, does that also include the elderly events?
It does not.
That's been approved now for over 10, 12 years, so if, I mean, if we're gonna add anything onto the actual budget, it should be the elderly stuff.
Well, the warrant, the senior warrant article covers a lot of the senior events that we hold, and that's at $4,500 for this year, and we anticipate $4,500 on the warrant article again.
So the reason we've never baked that into the whole budget was really that it's never really had a problem passing before. In fact, I think it actually goes, the percentage increases every year. But the, obviously, you know, it would be protected to a certain degree, like Lisa was describing with Old Home Day, if it was in the budget, but, I mean, I don't, I don't see it as a risk.
Yeah, and if you put everything into that budget, then you're not going to be... Yeah, not only does the budget go up, but the ability to pick and choose, you know, becomes harder, to actually do the choosing as to which ones you would actually follow through with. And like you said, I've, I haven't seen that particular article be an issue each year, and I have no problem with it staying as a warrant article.
Right, but we added in Old Home Day on this, now if they vote the budget down, then we won't have a Old Home Day next year, right?
Not necessarily, that's what I was saying. If it's built into the budget, even if they vote it down, if they decide that's more important than some of the other planned events, they could still go ahead and do it, because the voters didn't say no to Old Home Day.
They would just go back to the previous year's amount.
Exactly, so they'd have that amount of money to work with.
Realistically, if it, if we did have it, like you said earlier, it would be a...
Scale down.
Scale down, yeah.
Yeah, but it, we could still potentially do something.
It wouldn't be a no-means-no situation.
Correct. Whereas warrant article would be no-means-no, there would be no town day celebration of, or anything with that name.
Right. So in 2016, Old Home Day failed. In 2017, it was, was successful. It might be something we wanna just put every year.
Yeah, and I don't think it was a huge success.
It wasn't really huge.
I mean, it was...
Oh, no, a success, you're saying? I thought it was.
No, she needs a vote.
For the article, the vote.
Oh, the vote, okay.
The vote.
Thought we're switching gears there.
No, I don't think the, oh, I know the actual event was a huge success.
I agree with you on the vote part, it wasn't a huge...
And so I don't wanna risk putting us into a no-means-no position with Old Home Day. I still want Recreation to be able to do something for all, and that's the key, it's for all residents. It's not just seniors, it's not just kids, it's all residents. I don't want our hands tied.
But isn't the $6,000 enough to cover Old Home Day?
It's an increase of $7,500 for special programs.
Right, but we already have $6,000 in that budget line.
Yep.
Of which they've spent $1,442.
They haven't submitted everything yet.
Yeah, there's, there's...
That will be spent out by the end of the year.
I think we're gonna be under, anyway.
I just, I mean, that's a huge bump.
Wow.
Some of it could be offset by the, I mean, you have salaries for administration of $2,500, and you've spent $355.
Yeah, we didn't have anybody.
You had the crazy idea until about two or three months.
Oh, okay, you're anticipating that, that will be spent on secretarial efforts in the next year.
Exactly, 'cause we had a secretary for like three months, yeah.
How much do we need for the, the Old Home Day that we had, Newton Days?
$1,000, I think.
Do you know what the actuals were?
Oh, roughly.
I think it was five, like, four and change to five, or something like that.
I'm just saying, we have, they still have $8,100 left over.
Hold on, I just got a text from the project manager of Old Home Day. $5,000, I have it on good authority.
All right, so if we have $8,100 left over, why couldn't at the end of the year, we encumber the $5,000 to cover the Newton Days for next year?
Because we won't have invoices or anything else we can encumber.
Need a purchase order.
Yeah, it'd be a lot of...
Lot of scrambling to get...
There are, there are elements you could probably swing, but the whole thing, probably not.
Okay.
I just worry about when it goes into the town report and it goes out in the handouts, you know...
Doubled?
Almost tripled.
Mm-hmm.
No, just barely doubled.
Goes from $11,000 to $29,000.
Well, we're already talking about taking 10 out.
Right, so then, okay, yes, then it's doubled.
It could be a lifeguard, right, Mike?
I would think for the first year, trying to build it into the budget, you might be better off sticking with like the $5,000.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to, you know, build more into it and get it in the budget, but if you get like $5,000 into it for the first budget, then you can try to get more for the following.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying?
Especially how we've looked at a lot of people and, you know, tried to keep, have them keep their budgets as zeroed out as possible.
I mean, there are, there are a lot of things we wanna do with Old Home Day, especially now that it's got the momentum that it has.
I'd just like to see it actually get into a past budget first.
Yeah.
And then go for more, you know, baby steps.
Sure.
Better success. So I, I'm thinking if we were to make that $11,000 instead of $13,500, and then have the beach salary be a warrant article, which would make the total increase drop to $65,500, I believe?
Yeah, that's a lot easier than it's a...
A little, a lot easier to swallow.
What do you think, Steve?
I'll take whatever you guys have to do.
Don't say that. Don't say that. I have it on, I have a source that tells me that, that $4,000 might, we might be able to get away with $4,000, so...
But I'm good with five.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep the five.
In that case, I will move that we include the recreation budget in the draft town budget at $16,500.
There a second?
Oh, sorry, $16,000.
$16,000 even?
Yes.
Okay, I'd say what? So we took away $12,500.
Can you tell me where, Lisa, so we can correct ours?
So special programs?
Right, special programs drop down to $5,000.
Okay.
And the line 13, beach salary, is wiped out. That's because it's going to be a warrant article.
Okay.
So we took away...
Okay, yeah, that's...
$12,500, which means it's...
$17,500.
Correct. That's better.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll, we'll put this in with everything else, and we might, you have some time before we vote on it officially to, you know...
Sounds good.
...make any changes, and I think we should be good to go.
So can I just ask, Steve, the warrant articles you're putting in are for the Old Home Days, then?
There'll be a senior and old, there won't be one for the Old Home Day, and there'll be one for a lifeguard, so two.
And then you can expect some requisition probably forthcoming for that other stuff, so...
Okay. I wanna prepare the warrant article, so if you can give me some idea of what you want it to say, then I can critique it for you?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
All right.
Oh, and I have the, the proposed warrant article for conservation decrease.
Cool. All right, we're all set with rec., right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So I'm gonna put this to a vote of the participants. Which, which budget, okay, so that's a vote for Highway to go next? All right. That's two.
Past his bedtime.
So you're up.
You're up.
You're a two for anyway, right? You get two budgets tonight?
You wanna do the simple one first?
Yes, please.
Let's do the tree warden budget. Last year's budget was $3,000. We've only spent $625 to date. I didn't inherit that role until, I don't know, September or something, so most of the season was gone. Little late in the season to scurry around to do stuff with trees unless there's something obviously in danger, which I haven't seen yet.
You see the tree on Maple Ave?
Did we do what tree?
There's a tree on Maple Ave. Is it, it's the house on the left side heading towards Southampton. I think it's right up in, right across from 21. It's got the rock face. There's a tree leaning, I saw it the other day, leaning from the ground, it's leaning on the wires, the wires are holding the tree up.
Unitil.
Well, that's good, I was gonna say, I, the power company, we won't spend any money on that one.
Right?
Okay.
Yeah. If it's on the wires and it has some, some impact with the power sys, power grid, Unitil will take care of that.
Yeah, it's the only thing holding the tree up is the wires.
Okay. Well, well, it's good to know, I was not aware of that, so...
Have you been down that street much?
Ah, I don't go that far down.
Yeah, I've ridden.
That's the high-rant side, Matt, I don't go down that way, I have to go out the other way.
Oh, yeah, you don't wanna go down there, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we include the presented budget under care of trees in the town draft budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was the easy one.
Okay, Highway budget for 2018. Proposing to level fund all line items from '17 to '18. No changes.
Wow, that's great.
So that's always a good thing, however, the inevitable question is...
I'm waiting for it.
Yeah, is you've, you've collaborated with us the last couple of years, and you've kept things either flat or greatly reduced, so are we putting you in a position where there's stuff that you weren't able to do that we really should make up for?
Well, this year, the, the one killer for me is on unanticipated road improvements. We had a bone caught in the throat of progress, which was, I could not do, as you remember, the public hearing on Gil Village Road. So that threw all of the paving schedule out the window by the time we get through that item. We have done some paving, we did some paving today, overlays, which I'm not a big fan of overlays, but it was the only way we could catch that road before it got too far. So to answer your question, because of that delay that has saved us costs this year, but I'll need to make it up next year, the blessing to all that is, is we got that nice additional highway block grant.
Oh, right, right.
That'll help offset what I need to do next year.
And that's how you're able to level fund, is because you're getting the highway block? Okay.
Is it possible for him to, to request encumbrance of funds from this year to next year, once it's...
This is gonna be my next question, is, is there, are you planning on encumbering anything to kinda help you out in 2018?
Well, I, I would like to, and I know we're getting close to being the end of the year, but we have six weeks left, and as we speak right now, I have $53,000 left. The number, you can see I...
Yep, I saw that.
...handwrote it in the bottom, because that budget was from, I don't know, six weeks ago or something, whatever it was, right?
Yep.
So out of the 53, I still need to get through the next six weeks. No crystal ball. We've been fortunate up to this point, but, you know, four, four snowstorms, ice storms, or whatever the case may be, I'm tapped out. So I'm gonna let that ride, at least for another couple of weeks. There are some purchases we need to make for the highway, more, I mean, obviously, it's not equipment, but there's still items we need that I've been putting off. Road cones disappear like Tic Tacs, I don't know, they must eat them. We put them out on road closures and we get about a third of them back after two days, so...
Popular with the teenagers.
Somebody's accumulating them somewhere.
Popular with the teenagers.
I guess, I don't know what they do with them, but...
Dunce caps.
Yeah, perfect.
Are you gonna need new radios also to be able to communicate with the police?
Well, the radios, yeah, the, the radios is, no, there's, are an issue, but working with the police chief, he's upgrading some because of the, as you guys are aware of, the Rock upgrade on their end. So his radios are adequate for the highway. If that takes place, hopefully that will take place in the next few weeks, I think it's in the works. I think the radio place is running behind. Then I'll need some funds, not to buy the radios, just to install the radios, so that'll be a much reduced cost for those radios. Actually, it's a home run, 'cause we're not buying the radios, we're just installing them.
Now, I thought he needed to buy new radios to be able to communicate with Rock. So if those radios that he's taken out won't work, they won't work for you to communicate with him.
Different frequency.
Right?
Yeah, no, they'll work with, they'll, they'll still work on the town frequency. That's all highways operating on anyhow, is the town. When we work with fire and we work with PD, we're operating only on the town frequency.
Okay.
So I don't need, I mean, we don't need seacoast ground, we don't need rock. Actually, it would confuse a lot of people, so we just operate strictly on Newton, Newton Town. And all those radios are fine for that, there's, there's no issues with those. So that, that's the answer to the, there still could be some purchases, I'm getting as far into the calendar as I can before we do any of that.
So the encumbrance deadline is what?
December 31st, or prior to whatever meeting. Usually, we hold one more, but you gotta have something that's concrete, requisitions, invoices.
Right, you've done it before.
Oh, yeah, no, I know the drill, yeah.
So we just, somewhere, use your best judgment, but, you know, middle of the month would be nice, maybe our second meeting of December.
The middle of the month would be okay, 'cause I'm only looking at two weeks of potential weather-related issues, so I...
Our meetings are the fourth and the eight, 18th? Yes, 18th.
Yeah, I think so. Fifth maybe? And the, whatever.
Fifth, December 5th.
So that would be the 19th.
Okay, so it's the 15th, the, the fifth and the 19th.
Yeah.
So I only have one question with the, what was voted tonight in non-public as an inness for the salaries.
Okay. So we have to update that.
Be about 2, 3,000.
Yeah, yeah. So Nancy made a good point, the salaries that we discussed in non-public will alter this a little bit.
Will alter the year-end?
The salary line.
Yeah, but I mean, the, what we discussed earlier, I'm not asking to increase that line item.
Right, right.
It'll get absorbed in the.
Right.
Overall budget.
Okay.
Okay.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we include the highway and street budget in the draft town budget.
Second.
I'm gonna go with Lisa on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So while you're, while you're up there, Mike, can we, we have a letter to resident concerning metal posts in town's right-of-way. Do we want to discuss?
Oh, yeah, yeah, George's Way.
Yeah.
We do? I don't have.
You gonna go? You want me to check that?
Is this, it's on the agenda. Is this hit?
Where is it?
Right here.
No, it isn't.
I gotta, I have the letter right here. Are we just looking for a signature?
Yes.
Do we have to discuss the topic?
You can dismantle the topic.
Oh, right here.
Do you want to briefly?
Yeah, I can give you a quick synopsis of what it is.
Yeah.
It was brought to my attention, I don't know, a week ago, two weeks ago, that a resident had installed metal posts along the side of the asphalt. We have no problem, highway and on a safety level, if you put the fiber, the little thin fiberglass posts, you see them everywhere, they delineate driveways and, those are fine. You want to put them in to let us know where the edge of asphalt is, that's great. Metal posts, not so great. They freeze into the ground, they break, we can't see them in the snow, they become a safety hazard. So those can't go on the ground, those have to be gone. And, and then secondly, and we don't have enough time to do a complete educational seminar, but they're putting these markers in the town right-of-way. Some people are still misleading that their property goes right to the edge of asphalt.
Mm-huh.
It does not. I mean, every road's a little bit different, every setback or right-of-way is a little bit different, but, you know, th- this situation should be kind of nipped at the bud before it gets farther out of control. And, you know, if you want to put the fiberglass little markers up, that's okay, but no metal posts.
Just one thing in reading this letter, we need to mention that they installed the post on town property and that is not.
I think it's mentioned at the top. Well, when the letter was done, it says in town right-of-way.
Right.
Installed on the town's right-of-way.
I know, but it doesn't say anything about whether or not that is acceptable or not. And that's, to me, that's the first concern is, with the exception of mailboxes, somebody wants to build a stone wall on the town right-of-way, that is not acceptable.
Correct.
They have to build, I have one in front of my house, it's on my property. We do not permit that. So we do not permit them to put posts in.
No, I know what you're saying. How you put it in the letter, I guess, is.
Well, is there a town ordinance or?
So let me, if I may, I'm not gonna identify the resident, but it says, "The board of selectmen has been made aware that metal posts have been installed on the town's right-of-way at 14 George's Way. These metal posts can cause a safety hazard for our snowplows and the drivers." And it basically just talks about what can happen.
Right.
So what you're saying, Jim, is there, just needs to be a line added that says.
Violation of RSA or town.
Yeah, I, I think we have the RSA. I remember doing a letter like this previously and I, I think we can quote an RSA essentially is what.
Yeah, there are, there are stipulations that.
Yeah.
And quite honestly, even mailboxes, mailboxes are supposed to be a four-by-four wooden post.
Should.
Based upon United Postal Service. All, all the granite ones, and we're not gonna go do a survey or become the mailbox police, but those granite ones that are in the town right-of-way are not permitted. When they freeze in the ground, if a motor vehicle hits them, they don't break away.
Oh, exactly. However, this sounds like a really egregious situation where.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just something that needs to be stopped before it continues to go farther and farther. And the next thing we know, we've got, you know, bigger or heavier steel posts in the ground because the plow guys are plowing up town property.
So what I would suggest is if somebody wants to make a motion for us to sign this letter, we can offline, we can make the updates.
I, I, I will move to sign the letter with that one amendment.
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I, I'll talk to you guys, but there's one little grammatical thing I gotta point out, but.
Yes.
I won't put you through that right now, so. I think we're good if you have nothing else for us.
But what, you know, I, I have a minute and there's hundreds, maybe thousands of people that are watching us right now.
Millions, millions.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before NCIS.
I'll, I'll take a moment.
NCIS starts at eight.
Yeah.
So you've got 10 minutes before they switch the channel.
So just a reminder, and we, we do this every November, it's on the town web, highway section of the town webpage, that any sporting equipment that is still left out, because we've had mild winter, so it's, mild season, so it's being left, basketball nets, hockey nets, anything in the town right-of-way, please move them. Because it, we do feel bad, legitimately feel bad, when there's basketball nets and it snows and we bounce them into the woods. We prefer not to do that. If you can take them and move them out of the town right-of-way, that would help us all. But that, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, if I may, I just want to clarify.
I have no problem, there are people that have lovely little gardens along the edge of the road. Looks beautiful, but they have to realize that if for some reason the plow takes that garden and shifts it up onto their lawn because of, you know, we have an extremely heavy snow load that year.
Yep.
I've had people that have come, they're like, you know, should I be sending a bill to the town? And I'm like, no, you planted a plant on the town property, which you legally don't have, you know, you don't have any standing to, to claim that as yours. And they get very upset and so I.
Heavy male or crops.
We have known a few people in town to get upset during the winter snowplow season.
Oh, yeah.
It's occasional, but, yeah.
It's your quiet time, right?
It is.
During the snow season.
Quiet time.
All right.
It's just like it's mailbox season.
Same thing, yeah.
This, this season is mailbox season.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to the fire department budget.
Low, we need the low-level funded, so we have the right one?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. You should have the revised, because I got a little lesson this morning, so I had to change.
Is it higher than your last?
It's higher.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we got the, the good one.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, that's not the good one.
Well, it is in my eyes, but.
And what has happened is, and I also have, if anyone on the board knows any state reps, I have a little piece of paper that, it affects why the budget had the increase. If, if you look at the fiscal 2017, there's gonna be two items, as we're standing here now, that close to 20,000 is gonna go back into the town, to the general fund. That's 15,000 for the grant, because the grant will not come out until next year. And then there's the remaining 4,000 and change for the vehicle, for the vehicle lease. The new vehicle lease won't start till next year. So those two are coming, going back in. What I did was, I thought that I could incumbent the grant for 2018 when I did the original budget. That's why it actually came in less. I learned today that I cannot do that unless there's a purchase order or invoice, which we do not have.
You still have four weeks. Three weeks.
I, I'm sure you must know a state rep, so I'll give you the love letter that we received to notify the state reps. As of possibly January next year, the grant that we're trying to get could be obsolete.
Oh, wow.
So if it is obsolete.
Give me the letter, I believe I can place it personally in the hand of a state rep.
Who is probably watching, well, who's probably watching this as we speak.
So I'll answer any questions.
Doing away with the grant?
According, on January 2nd, 2018, it will be eliminated.
Oh.
Unless some people make connections, that have connections, and get lovely politicians to vote to allow it to come back.
So it looks like the, the main uppers for your budget are the, the lease for the vehicle, right?
Correct, that's.
That's one.
Repair.
And then repairs is the other.
Right, if you look at the, if you look at the 2017 budget on both sides, for, on the apparatus and on the equipment, the monies that were for maintenance, came out of maintenance and went into repairs.
Yep.
So all we basically did was take from one to put the other. That's why it looks like a big jump.
Mm-huh.
But if you notice above it, the line above it, it's actually a decrease.
So we're, it's a 12.7 increase overall.
Which actually is quite reasonable. I do have one question. I looked at your medical supply lines. And it appears you're decreasing the number there. Now, this might help the people at home, but things like NACAM, which, on the news they're saying it's $180 a dose.
Correct.
$2,500 that you're taking out of that line is probably 100 doses of NACAM, which I understand some towns can use that in a month.
Correct. What, we have been fortunate in the new revised agreement with Trinity. We, if we use any medication or any supplies, we are making sure that the members, before Trinity leaves the scene, we get the supplies that we used.
Oh, okay.
So in the contract, it says one-for-one, we're making sure that one-for-one is happening.
Okay. I just, I've spoken to some people from the fire department who have mentioned that more than one dose of this stuff is needed and, while I'm big on saving lives, from what they're describing, I couldn't figure out how your budget could not be in the red.
Right. It, on, on the other side of the coin, in doing so, doing the one-for-one and changing the agreement, we've done more transports this year.
Yes.
I just, matter of fact, I just received the amount for this fiscal year, which I turned into the town administrator, that the town has, well, the town has received for, in that, I forgot what it was designated to, all the EMS funds from the insurance. It's, it doesn't go into no budget, it goes directly to the EMS fund.
The ambulance.
The ambulance, correct. The ambulance.
It's the revolving fund.
The revolving fund.
Right.
Yeah.
Which that is being, that is being built up. We have a big-ticket item.
Not a big deal.
That we're gonna need to purchase within a year or so, but doing the transports, we should be able to do it right out of there.
Okay. That's something that, as part of the budget process, we probably have a, a copy of where that is.
The, the amount of funds that have come in so far.
Right.
I just turned, I believe I turned it in to the town administrator. This is year-to-date. This is the newest one that I just received.
Kim just did that one, yep.
Today.
Yep, it's on this year.
Yep.
Okay, I have them.
Right, the, the only, and the board should have the invoices.
Okay.
For the two hazmat spills that we've had this year and the fire watch. That, that money also went into the general fund.
We're setting up a new Warren article for that for next.
Yeah, right.
Mm-huh.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we include the fire department budget in the draft town budget.
Second.
All right.
As proposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Well, as you know, we'll probably be in touch because you're the, what do you get? Second billing or third billing in town for budget? Third. So when we get, I'll get back together in January or whatever it is, we'll, we'll need you.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take that one.
All right, moving right along. The 2017 tax rate. Is this just a?
Announcement.
It should be announced, yep.
Do I have something in here to read?
We only get the tax bills today.
I know.
Yeah, I think everybody knows it was posted.
Yeah, we got our bills today, we know.
However, we, we have to officially announce that the tax rate has gone from 2619.
16.
16 to 2658.
Yep, yep.
The town portion remained steady, it went up zero.
At 3.65.
The county went up three cents and the schools went up 39 cents.
Right. So a total increase of 42 cents per thousand for the 2017 tax rate?
Right. And most people probably received their tax bill today.
Yes.
Mine's unopened.
Mine's unopened.
Cringing.
All right, so in general, it's just information, information sharing with folks. Anything else we need to discuss with that? I'm gonna move on. It is what it is, as they say. So, all right. Next one, liaison to stewardship committee. I won't read the whole email, but I got an effort, an email from Mary Marshall from the stewardship committee. She's looking, not just she, but the committee, looking to improve communication between the, the board and that committee, inviting me to be the liaison between the two groups. So I just wanted to run that by.
I'll make a motion that Matt Beryl be our liaison to the stewardship committee.
Second.
I think we'll give that to Lisa.
I like the rationale.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? So I think we're good to go. So I'll, I'll personally reach back out to her and say that I'm good to go and, and I'll keep the board informed as to what we, what we hear, as, as we do with any of our, our ex officio positions to other boards. All right, Comcast franchise fees.
That's your typical letter for the board to sign, receiving the monies and breaking it out between the town's fund and the cable committee.
So 25,000 to the town, 2,500 revolving fund out of it and.
Yeah, something like that.
Move to sign the letter to the cable franchise, to the cable, sorry, to the bookkeeper regarding
the cable franchise fee.
Second.
Just to be clear, the money comes into the town, made out to the town, we deposit it, and then Kim cuts the check to go into the revolving account?
Right.
One thing that I'm going to suggest and I.
Was Larry the second? Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
I know last year we reduced the amount that went into the cable revolving fund. There was an issue fairly recently out back regarding the overheating of equipment and what may possibly be causing it. Should we maybe be putting 10% at least in there? Okay.
If you, if you look at the revolving account.
Right.
They have a, a good abundance of money.
Oh, okay.
172,000.
And it is 10%.
No, right at the moment, they get half of 1%.
Be enough to buy an air conditioner.
0.5%, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Although the...
We get 5%.
Franchise fee check was 25,750.
Right.
No, the total is 5%, we get 4.5 of that 25,000, and the cable gets 0.5.
Right. I was just, I was under the impression that last year, when we did the rework of, that we had spent it down quite substantially.
No, that's why they offered to give it back to offset taxes, because they have plenty in their account.
Okay.
And they've just bought all their new equipment, so they're not looking for any big purchases.
Well, I wasn't certain in hearing grumblings about...
Diane figured it out, we lost power, and that caused everything to not work out there, the air conditioning.
Yeah, basically, when these, when these air conditioning units, when they lose power and it comes back on, they get reset somehow, so you have to manually power them off again.
Oh, okay.
So we didn't know the power had gone off here, because it didn't go off on Maple Ave, so we assumed that it was okay.
So we may need to spend 50 to 75 dollars to get one of those little monitors, it's called a digital clock that you take the battery out of, so that you know whether or not the power went off.
Blinking, yeah, that might work.
And usually the microwave here tells us. 10% of the 5% that gets sent to the town goes to the cable revolving fund, that's what I was saying.
Okay.
It may say 0.5%, but 10% of what we get goes to the revolving fund, and then we keep the 90%. Right.
So I'm gonna ask, all in favor?
Raising it to 10.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's everybody. So, next, it looks like dragon mosquito permit application.
This is in preparation of next year's treating of the mosquitoes in the lobby and all that. They just basically need the chairman to sign page six, so that they can put the application into the state for the chemicals.
Okay.
Move to sign, if the chairman signs the dragon mosquito permit?
Second.
Seconded by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's everybody. Just, just 'cause I thought of it, we had, I don't think anything can be done, but our sort of, our summer lasted longer this year, which is not a bad thing, but, but the bees at the transfer station, coming out of the recycling, unbelievable this year, like, to the extent that when the police chief was doing the drug takeback on the other side, the bees were over there when I was talking to him, like, they were unbelievable, and I talked to Tom about it, and, and, you know, it's the sugar, right, they're attracted to the sugar left. So I don't know if there's anything we can do to, you know, I don't know, spray, like, early in the season or something like that, I just wanted to throw it out there.
You can talk to pest end and see if they have a treatment.
See what they might have.
We're not looking to treat now, because it is getting...
Yeah, it's, it's over now.
And you also want to be careful when you start talking about decimation of pollinators.
I just want to kill bees.
Don't you know the soul towers are doing that?
I'm just kidding.
Are these honeybees, or the kind that don't sting, they just go after the food and stuff?
I think, I think...
Well, the problem is, is we say bees when we mean wasps, most of them are usually yellow jackets.
Yeah, or hornets.
Which is a type of wasp or hornet, not bees.
But those are the ones that are down, they have the...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yellow jackets, okay.
Yeah, 'cause...
So we're talking over by the, in transfer station?
Yeah, the...
Over at the camps.
Yeah, they're unbelievable.
They've been there for years.
Yeah, but I mean, this year was particularly amplified, because instead of the two or three weeks, they, it went all the way into November.
It's been long.
Right.
No, that's how I found out my son was allergic to yellow jackets. He got stung at the transfer station.
Doing the Boy Scout thing?
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along. So we have announcements? Do we have any announcements?
We have that Danielle French has resigned.
Well, that's, that's a resignation, but, okay.
Why don't we do that before we do the...
I do want to, just before I forget, tell everybody, if you're interested, tomorrow is the Newton Turkey Trot, which is run by a private organization of residents to help a needy family, so I believe, if I'm correct, the raffle starts around 1 o'clock tomorrow, the race, I believe, is at 2:30, I may be wrong. I believe online registration is closed, but if you go to our website, there is more details, and I believe you can walk up and sign up if you want to do a last minute thing. It's family friendly, so you can bring all the kids and that sort of thing, it is a good cause, and hopefully it'll be a nice time, so.
And you're representing the board of selectmen again this year?
I'm gonna be the fastest member of the board of selectmen, I can say that with all confidence.
I can guarantee that.
Yeah.
One thing, since you sound like you're somehow otherwise involved with this organization.
I'm really not involved with the organization, I just always run it, run in it.
A couple of years ago, I tried to find them, because I was gonna make a donation to their raffle, I've never gotten word back from them.
Oh, that's funny, because they've been pretty responsive to, to me, I go right through their Facebook page.
That's, that's actually where I'd gone.
Did you?
I just, this is the time of year when I get inundated by, we're doing something, and town stuff, I actually try to support.
I don't know, I'll find, I'll see what I can find out, but, so I'd encourage people to attend that, even if you don't run it, you can attend and buy the raffle items, and I know that a bunch of the neighborhoods have put together some great raffle baskets and, and some good stuff. So, we do have one resignation from the fire department that we have to announce, and this is for Danielle French, is it?
Yep.
Yes.
Move to accept the resignation of Danielle French, effective today.
Second.
Is that correct, effective today?
I think the letter, the... Do we want it effective, the date of her letter?
The date of the letter is the 15th.
I don't have it, so...
You should have an effective date, I'm not, I don't have it.
One second.
Well, still, I mean, we can't retroactively accept a letter of resignation, so it's...
Yeah, but it's been a while, I think, so we want to go back to the date that it was...
So, it looks like she notified via email the chief on October 26th.
Right.
For what that's worth, but...
We'll use that date, that's a good date.
What date, October 23rd?
October 26th.
You good with that amendment to your...
Not technically, but I'm not gonna rumble about it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we thank Danielle for her service. Any other business? No? We're gonna sign manifest, Jim, did you want to?
I'll, I'll just do the list. I move to sign the vendor manifest dated November 21st, 2017, in the amount of 106,768 dollars and 84 cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
I move we sign the payroll manifest for the pay period 10/29/2017 to 11/11/2017, with a pay date of 11/16/2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move that we sign the requisition number 2540, in the amount of 381 dollars for 20 additional seniors, for the senior holiday luncheon at the Roma Restaurant in April, Mass. on December 6th, 2017.
That was like three simulta, that was like the Beach Boys, that was three-part harmony. So let's go with Larry.
Should've gone with Paul.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's all of them, Jim, right? All right, no abatements, no tax credits, no correspondence or appointments?
Uh, no.
Move to adjourn?
No, no, no.
Sounds like Lisa's got something on her mind.
I do.
I'd like to tell everybody, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Did anyone look at the email that we received the other day from the executive counselor, Russell Prescott, is it?
I saw it, but did not read it.
Okay, there were a couple of items that piqued my curiosity, so I wanted to just bring them to the board and see what we have to say, and that's not it. That is not it, so hang on, I emailed myself so I wouldn't forget.
Remember, things, it says right at the bottom here, please note unscheduled matters are limited to a 15-minute discussion.
There you go.
It says right at the bottom.
So, number 55, these were things that were voted on by the executive council, authorized to enter into contract with Holden Engineering, to conduct a complete boundary survey and marking on the Pearly Lake Forest property in Ridgefield, which I don't care about, and to conduct a complete boundary survey and marking parcel number two of the Sergeant Wildlife Management Area in Newton. Do we know what that is?
Yes.
It's over at Currieville Road.
The what?
That's the property off of Currieville Road.
Okay, but why are they doing a boundary survey and marking? I think, well, I think the sergeant property is on Amesbury Road, it's between...
That's what I thought.
Bear Hill and Amesbury Road.
Actually, I always thought it was the one on... There are a lot of pieces of property that were donated by...
Maybe that's why they're doing the boundary survey and marking, because everybody thinks it's something different.
Yeah, it sounds like it's, it's one of those pulse checks of, you know...
Okay, I wanted to find out, because they're spending 24,000 between Pearly Lake and Hours.
Well, I can tell you why they're updating the surveys, is because the county is working through the Rockingham Planning Commission on trying to get, each time a new survey is done, they're trying to get the topographical maps for the, for all of the towns in Rockingham County to actually...
Line up with each other?
Right.
Okay. All right, I wanted to understand what they were doing in our town.
They're now doing it via GPS versus, if you go to the tax maps downstairs, those are all done by, assuming the earth is flat.
It's round.
And now, now they're having, they're changing it, and at one point, it's quite possible the state legislature is gonna come in and say, they have to determine whether or not acreage is gonna be based on flat base or on slope. It, it's a strange little thing, but...
Lisa, you had another one on there?
I do. All right, and again, it's just, you know, does it or does it not relate to us? Item number 72 was to authorize and accept, to accept and expend a grant from Bureau of Justice Statistics entitled national da-da-da, in order to purchase updated fingerprinting machines for use by law enforcement agencies around the state. So, is that law enforcement agencies around the state, at the state levels, state, county, local, you know, is this a grant that is, you know... So is that an offering, a grant?
That was expending.
It's accept and expend, so...
So they're, they're purchasing the machines, so the question would be, I think we should give an action to the police chief to see if he wants to place a call. My guess would be, a total guess, is it's just for the county, for the sheriffs, or for the state police?
I was just gonna say, most likely it's for the state.
Yeah, probably the county has their own.
If the executive council is doing it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But that grant, maybe it's something that you can get more information on as well.
That's a good lead for the police chief.
That's why I'm bringing it up. I think Kingston did get the new fingerprinting, and Mike said it was very expensive, so I don't know if it was a grant or not, but we...
Yeah, because they now have the scanners, as opposed to the old ink jobs.
Well, I wanted to bring it up, because I saw it, grant fingerprinting machine. There's a possibility, because all the fingerprints that we do come back is not being readable, you know?
Yeah, true, yeah.
I have to throw it out there, so if our liaison to the police department could kind of follow up on that, see if...
Yeah, he will, he's a good guy.
All right, that's all I had.
That's all you had?
Yeah, just the two.
Move to adjourn.
So Larry, did you just move to adjourn?
No, Jim did.
I, I moved to adjourn, provided everybody agrees to wish the town of Newton and all its residents a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to all of our residents.
Jim's pies.
So that was seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll see you guys on the 5th of December.
Right.